Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jeff Kane from C-3 Church in Milton to lead us in the vacation.
All right, let's pray. Father God, we thank you. We're reminded so much this week of just how thankful we are to live in this great country where we have freedom, God, to elect people to lead us, and God, we don't live under tyranny or dictatorial rule, God, but you've provided for us so well, God, and we're so thankful today. And God, we thank you that you ask us to pray for those leaders that we elect. And so, God, as we come before you today, we ask, God, that you'd be with these city council members and this mayor, Father, that as they go forth to make decisions about the future of this city, God, that you'd be with them, God, in mind and in heart. Give them peace and knowledge and wisdom, God, to do what you would have them do. God, let your will be done on earth, just like it is in heaven. We love you and we thank you for all these things, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Kane. Appreciate you being here. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, December 2nd, 2013, to order. The city clerk, please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the December 2nd, 2013, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koots.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. It looks like we've got some students here also, so appreciate you coming. I know you guys decided to be here. And if the council will bear with me, I would like to, before we get onto our agenda, if I could swear a wine in for him back, if, Tim, is that all right?
Of course, Mr. President.
Before we start the...
(coughing)
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 13279.
Okay, I know we need to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition and lease negotiations. Is there anything else? Staff, do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Counsel, anything? If so, I'll open up for a motion for our agenda.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss land acquisition and lease negotiations.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loz, second, by Councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone, stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any general public comments?
We do have one, sir.
Okay.
This comes from Patricia, I hope I'm saying the last name correctly, Fred Hunt?
Patricia Fredland, 320 Stone Hill Point, was not prepared to speak as I was not aware that this was an option or this meeting and such. So, speaking in regards to the nine acres located on Bethany and Cogburn. A year ago or so, when this process all started, I knew nothing about the whole process and who you all were and stuff. Can't say that within this past year that what I do know, I wish I didn't. I'm not, I don't trust any of you all and the process in which, you know, what has happened. I've contributed, I participated, showed up, listened, and, again, things that were presented halfway to each different committees so far. I've had different committee members from different groups come and tell me different things. We were first told stakeholders. No one could give us a description of a stakeholder. Then we were told we were stakeholders. But yet, I was told by her to only invite a small amount of people so that we wouldn't have a big discussion. Well, that's not fair. I don't represent anyone but myself. In meeting with the mediator that you all hired, he represented you all and the opposing landowner. Didn't represent us fairly. Brought nothing to the table except for what they wanted to do. Yes, we sat and we talked with him about the different things that he could do with the property. Yes, they are not thinking of doing the 95-bed nursing home, but they are considering the, you know, doing the 27, 28, who knows, in the 14, 17 meetings when it was actually only four. So, since the different processes, the different meetings, things that have been said have not been truly represented in different facts, and I don't feel that you've all had the opportunity to actually speak with us. You stepped away from the process because it was difficult, and you brought in a mediator. I don't think he did his job. I spoke each time of those meetings, saying I did not represent anyone but myself. Yes, I was happy that he got, they chose to get rid of the 95-bed nursing home, but I'm still not happy with the 27, 28 homes that they've got there now. Since the negotiations of only the four meetings, they've, half you, some of you know about the negotiations, that the reports, planning committee, I think the board review didn't have the report, so things have changed. Last meeting a week ago or so I attended, it was the value of the homes have gone down, the square footage of the homes have gone down, but yet, that was discussed by two different people, two different numbers were, again, you know, thrown back out there to different people. Started with the process of the community coming to you and telling you they did not want commercial use on that property. The community spoke.
Two minutes remaining.
But y'all didn't want to deal with the difficulties of a one landowner who claimed hardship. He bought the property, hoping to turn around and make a quick buck. He got screwed by the economy. I'm sorry. You know, I got screwed too. I'm unemployed, I have a child in college, I have a brother who's dying, has no insurance, and I'm helping to pay for his medical bills. I have another brother who served this country and can't get a job and now lives with me. I've got a hardship. You want to take that into consideration? By allowing them to build where they, what they are, it's going to direct, affect the cost of my homes and my neighbors. So, I wish you would all listen to everybody and consider the community, not just one, and not what the good old boy club discusses privately, separately, that you include us all. And like I said, I've circled around you all throughout this past year socially and in meetings, and I'm not impressed by you. I will not vote for any one of you again.
Thank you. Any more public comments, Sudi?
That's all, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before you close the public comment, if you'd just reserve it, open potentially, Mr. Colvin is here, we would like to address the council, but he and our city attorney are meeting before they, before he makes a decision as to whether or not he'd like to address the council, so I asked if we could just hold it open and come back to it at a later point in the meeting, if in fact we need it.
Okay, but okay with council? All right. Let's move on to our consent agenda. City clerk, please call that out.
First item is approval of the November 13th, 2013, special called regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 13280. Next, approval of the November 18th, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 13281. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Blunt Construction, Inc., for sidewalk and curb replacement at Deerfield Parkway, Webb Road, Morris Road, Fire Station Number 43, and Wyndham Farms subdivision, Agenda Item Number 13282. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of an agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Milton for transportation facility improvements of multi-use trail connection to Big Creek Greenway scoping and concept study. This is Agenda Item Number 13283. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscape's, Inc., for stormwater pipe repair on Bethany Road, Agenda Item Number 13284. Our sixth and final consent agenda item is consideration of the approval of K-9 program implementation agreement. This is Agenda Item Number 13285.
Okay, I have a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Thurman, second, from Councilmember Hewitt on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations.
Under reports and presentations this evening, we have recognition and presentation of Milton's five-year anniversary service award pens. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, this next item that's coming up, special for all of us. December 1st marked our seven-year anniversary of the incorporation of the City of Milton. In recognition, we're giving service pens to those staff members who have been with us for five years. I'd like to, I'm gonna have Chris call out our staff members and step forward, but as our handout pins, also, I've asked our council to stand there with me.
(inaudible). Yes. Mayor and council, as you're coming down, I've got the list of those that have joined us tonight. Let me, we've got them over here, and have them come forward, and then I'll read the names of those that didn't make it tonight, for whatever reason. But with us tonight, we have from the Fire Department, Dan Brayden. Firefighter Campbell is here. Firefighter Fortner is here.
Firefighter Kennedy.
Andrew Kennedy. And the Fire Chief, Chief Edgar, is here. Five-year pin to Councilmember Bert Hewitt tonight, so he's double duty up front.
Thank you, sir.
Kathy Vies is here from the Police Department.
Thank you, sir.
And last but not least, that's here tonight, is our City Attorney, Ken Gerard. Mayor and council, we've got a couple of others, and I'll just read their names real quick, and we'll get their pin to them at a later date. Not with us tonight is from the Fire Department, Michael Baumgartner, Joe Champion, Daniel Clausen, Cameron Dean, Timothy Murray, Eric Sprouse. Not with us tonight from the Police Department, Kevin Berry and Stephen Hewitt.
(inaudible).
Yeah, you guys did a photo op. You guys put in all the way down.
(inaudible).
And have them come forward, and then I'll read the names of those that didn't make it tonight, for whatever reason. But with us tonight, we have from the Fire Department, Dan Brayden. Firefighter Campbell is here. Firefighter Fortner is here. Firefighter Kennedy. Andrew Kennedy. And the Fire Chief, Chief Edgar, is here. Five-year pin to Councilmember Bert Hewitt tonight, so he's double duty up front. Kathy Vies is here from the Police Department. And last but not least, that's here tonight, is our City Attorney, Ken Gerard. Mayor and council, we've got a couple of others, and I'll just read their names real quick, and we'll get their pin to them at a later date. Not with us tonight is from the Fire Department, Michael Baumgartner, Joe Champion, Daniel Clausen, Cameron Dean, Timothy Murray, Eric Sprouse. Not with us tonight from the Police Department, Kevin Berry and Stephen Hewitt.
(inaudible).
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 (applause).
Okay, Sudi, if, Chris, do we want to close public comments? You want it off? Anybody seen the guy with the bowtie on?
Okay, we'll, you'll read the first presentation item, Sudi.
First item is consideration of RC 1316, VC 1306, northeast corner of Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road, by Arrowhead Real Estate Partners, LLC, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan to develop 28 single-family residences at a density of 3.08 units per acre, and to request the following concurrent variance: to reduce the interior building separation from 14 feet to 10 feet for the entire development, Section 64921K. Agenda Item Number 13286. Our second first presentation item is consideration of U1303, U1307, 13440, Cogburn Road, by St. Francis Day School, Inc., for a use permit, Section 641831, to increase the area of the school and the total square footage from 92,616 square feet to 109,116 square feet. That includes a practice gym and two maintenance buildings, a two-part concurrent variance for the following: first, buildings shall be set back more than 30 feet from the edge of the required landscape strip or easements, Section 6411453B. Second, buildings shall not be oriented to a public street, Section 64-11452A. This is Agenda Item Number 13287. Our final first presentation item this evening is consideration of U1304, VC 130413895, Hopewell Road, by Jeff Runner, for a use permit to use the existing house and approximately five acres for a special event facility, Section 641812. A four-part concurrent variance for the following: first, to delete the eight-foot-high opaque fence along the south property line, Section 641812B2B. Second, to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along all property lines, Section 6411413B. Third, to delete the three-year period requirement, Section 641812B6. And fourth, to allow access from a local street, Section 641812B1. This is Agenda Item Number 13288.
Jeff? I have a motion on the first presentation item.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the reading of the items under the first presentation.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Loz, second. Councilmember Koots, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under public hearing or zoning tonight, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll call the item.
Consideration of an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapters 46 of the Milton Code of Ordinances governing solid waste collection services within the City of Milton, providing for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste, and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the City of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment, prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing for forfeiture and for making other provisions. This is Agenda Item Number 13273. First presentation was heard at the November 18th regular council meeting. Ms. Cindy Ead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of the reaffirmation of our solid waste ordinance. There haven't, has not been any major changes at all this year. Things have been going smoothly with our solid waste haulers for the most part. We do get occasional complaints. Usually, they are taken care of quickly. The infrastructure maintenance fee has been fairly timely this year, so everybody is pretty current at this point. So, we're just asking for your reaffirmation because we need this to move forward with a new contract with the haulers, which is just really a statement of the ordinance, and we get them to sign a letter saying that they are in agreement with the terms of the ordinance, and that becomes the contract that we have with these haulers. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Cindy on this? Joe?
Yes, sir.
Cindy, are we inviting or extending that to all of our current haulers?
We are, yes.
So, nobody's been problematic or particular challenge?
I can't say that it has been completely perfect. I probably receive one complaint every two weeks about a hauler. It may be that they're picking up earlier than the ordinance permits, 7:30 in the morning, bothering people. Maybe they're not doing the recycling like they're supposed to. Pretty minor type complaints. So, generally, they're, you know, they say that they'll take care of them, and then I don't hear back from the resident, so I'm assuming that they're taking care of.
So, and we haven't had any issues with regards to the fees associated with the permits, things like that? I know we got sort of crossways with a hauler in the past, and...
Yes. No, everything's, everything's been okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13273.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Hewitt, second. Councilmember Longoria, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, we'll move on to the reports. Is there anything that council wants to report, except for that?
Just Bill.
I wanted to comment on Agenda, Consent Agenda, item that we passed tonight, and that's the agreement with GDOT. Happy to see that finally take some legs. Something I started talking with Carter about earlier this year, and we did some temporary investigations, but it involves Milton connecting to the Big Creek Greenway. And this agreement here provides $200,000 in funding from GDOT, along with a $50,000 match from the city. And I believe maybe if Carter doesn't get away too quickly, we're gonna try to get some funding from Alpharetta to help supplement that agreement, too.
Is this our sidewalk?
Connection to the Big Creek.
Oh, yes, right.
So, happy to see it growing legs, and hopefully, within the next couple of years, we can start construction on that. Connecting to about, what, eight miles in Alpharetta, a couple miles in Roswell, and ultimately, about 15 miles in Forsyth County. So, it'll be quite an extensive amenity for our city. I think it'll serve a lot of people. Judging from the traffic that I see on Big Creek Greenway in Forsyth County, it's really well-used, and I'm sure residents in Milton will be able to use it just as well when we connect to it. Thanks for the work.
Well, but I don't think I have anything to add to that.
The quality of life, that's what we're all working for, we're sitting. Anybody else? Chris?
We've got an update tonight in the Justin Adams case that we owe you, a 30-day update. We'd like to present that to you tonight, and I believe, based upon comments that we'll give to you, if we have to, the council and the mayor's, to whether or not we wish to hear Mr. Adams' attorney tonight. So, I'll just turn it over to Carter, give you an update.
So, about 30 days ago, we approved a contract with Dinsmore Grading to effect the cleanup of the Justin Adams property over on Cogburn Road. At that point, he had asked for a 30-day extension to allow him some time to go in and do some cleanup work himself on the property. And we were coming back tonight to kind of give you a 30-day update on what we had found out there. We did an extensive walkthrough with the contractor back on November the 18th, and at that point, these are some photos from that particular trip. The only thing that had been removed that we could tell was a Wellcraft boat and a couple of jet skis. The remainder of the property was in about the same shape as we had seen it before.
David, yeah?
It's not looking for me.
Okay.
If you'd just kind of work through those relatively slowly. Now, these are some shots of the site as they existed on the 18th. Did a drive-by today to kind of assess whether or not there's been substantial progress on the site since the 18th, and from the road, there had been really no significant changes that we could tell on the site either. Mr. Colvin, his attorney, is here tonight and has indicated that further on the site, that some of the rock material that you see here over on the north side of the site had been removed, and some preparations to move some of the equipment have also been affected. But to the best of my knowledge, at this point, all of that still exists on the site in some form or fashion. The rock itself, we would leave on the site as part of the landscape equipment, or landscape use on the property. The remainder of the equipment and stuff on the site would be removed. So, at this... that some of the rock material that you see here over on the north side of the site had been removed, and some preparations to move some of the equipment have also been affected. But to the best of my knowledge, at this point, all of that still exists on the site in some form or fashion. The rock itself, we would leave on the site as part of the landscape equipment, or landscape use on the property. The remainder of the equipment and stuff on the site would be removed. So, at this point, I think we were just gonna give you an update, kind of get a feel for where you felt like we were, and the contractor is really kind of on hold, waiting for a notice to proceed from us. But that is the site as it existed on the eighteenth.
Let's see the...
That was two weeks into the thirty-day review, yes, sir.
And did you say you did a drive-by inspection since then?
I went by there today to see if there had been any significant changes, and from what I could tell from the road and perimeter of the property, I couldn't see interior of the property because of our notification requirements, but other than the boat and the jet skis that had been removed, that was the only significant items that I could tell had been removed from the property. And we got a new trailer with some other piece of equipment on it, so...
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Colvin is here this evening and was back discussing this situation with Mr. Lucas and myself, and I think he does, in fact, want to share with you sort of his take on this as, you know, with his particular relationship with Mr. Adams, and what he believes Mr. Adams is prepared to do, and if the mayor and council would see fit, I would respectfully recommend that he be given an opportunity to do that, if that's agreeable, of course.
I believe, just got started, the council was open to extended public comment. We'll get back in, so if you'd like to open or continue public comment.
Good evening, council members. Again, my name is William L. Colvin. I'm an attorney. My office is in Alpharetta, Georgia. I've been in the Alpharetta-Roswell area since two thousand, been attorney about twenty-two years. Started representing Mr. Adams, just a little background for you, a couple of years ago, and frankly, he and I, as my old boss and can you say, couldn't jihad. He just was not gonna listen to me, and I'm a problem solver, I'm not a problem creator. That's the way I've tried to conduct my practice over my entire career. So, I am pleased to tell you, though, that since Mr. Lucas was out on the eighteenth, Mr. Adams has made some significant, or I believe significant, progress, I guess, taking in the context of entirety of the situation. It is a grave situation, and I realize that this council yourselves, and I guess your predecessors, have had to deal with this issue for a long time, a lot of time, a lot of resources have been allocated, and focused on this one individual and his wife, property, and these issues. But Mr. Adams and I are jihad now. We are communicating well, and things are happening. I believe your photos showed, and it's not that one, that there was a travel trailer. Maybe you just continue there, okay, just stop there. That travel trailer was blocked by about fifteen feet by seventy-five feet of this sand, and it's a landscape material that Mr. Adams wants to use for weed control. And he certainly has his own vision of a wheelchair garden, and I think Ms. Green has been permitted since the seventies for growing plants, and, you know, there's all type of related gardening materials, landscapes, things, and certainly to the excess. I'm not gonna sit here and try to tell you that I don't identify a lot of that myself or discuss with him, that I see there's some problems there with accumulation. I guess there are TV shows on it called Hoarding and such, and certainly has some of those aspects, so... But anyway, that burn, that fifteen-by-seventy-five-foot burn that was in front of that travel trailer, has now been leveled, because when you drive up and park, I couldn't tell that, because there's still some remnants of that to the left of it, but there is actual, a roadway now going back to that. Mr. Adams told me this evening that that trailer should be removed within the next day or two, so that trailer will be gone. There is a bulldozer that is to the left of there that is scrapped, and he has indicated to me that that bulldozer would be sold for scrap this week. There are some other bulldozer, some kind of construction equipment on the other left side, and a boat. I think both of those are, he's indicated are scrapped or need to be trashed.
Two minutes remaining.
I'm sorry?
You have two minutes remaining, sir.
Okay. So, the point being is, you know, this has been a long time coming. I've not even been involved, but about sixty days, also representing, you know, him and Ms. Green in a criminal proceeding before the municipal court of Milton, as well as a civil proceeding with Mr. Gerard's office, the abatement action, which we've successfully resolved. We allowed the city inspectors to come in and to inspect, and Mr. Adams worked directly with Wade Green and got that into compliance, and that action was dismissed. So, I'm not coming to you this evening asking for more time for Mr. Adams and not able to say, well, we've got some results in the last sixty days. I think we've got more results of cooperation and working with the city than you probably had in the last eight years. So, I'm not gonna sit here and try to pat myself on the back, because frankly, I can't do anything if Mr. Adams doesn't want it to happen. Mr. Adams has Ms. Green, she is his wife, she's got some medical conditions which I'm trying to help address as well, so it's a lot of work to do on a lot of different areas, but I've got, I think, the time and experience and ability to help with that. So, I just want you to know, I'm still his attorney today. I'm gonna be his attorney Friday when we come back to court on the criminal side. And any considerations you've given him, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart personally, as well as his attorney for that, and I just ask for whatever considerations that you would deem in your wisdom that you could afford him from your, uh, forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, is it, can we ask questions?
You absolutely can. I'm sure Mr. Colvin will be happy to answer.
Absolutely.
Also, a question to you, you know, I think the council was generous, and it just happened to be, you know, logistical that when Mr. Adams asked for thirty more days, that even though we pursue the process, it would take at least thirty more days. I don't know where that is right now, you know, last conversation I had, it may still take us a little bit more time to fulfill having the contract out there, but I guess my question is, you know, it's like he waited till the last, you know, twenty-nine days and just make barely, just a little bit of effort, and you have any comment on that?
Absolutely.
I mean, because we were not, we're not trying to bring someone else in and cost him money, you know, cost him money, but it's been going on for years now.
Yes, Mayor, and I can tell you that that was certainly my concern as well. In dealing with this issue, Mr. Adams has made it pretty clear to me that he is the only income source for, and again, he made this bet, so he's trying to unmake it. And, but unfortunately, Ms. Green is not, does not provide any financial assistance, and she has the ability, and he's frustrated about the fact that she won't help him deal with any of these issues, but at the same time, he's respectful of that, and he is not seeking my help to try to end around her or get around that with her. So, what I'm trying to tell you is that I think a part of the dealings has been that he hasn't had the funds, but I can tell you, he is now contracted with an individual who has helped him make the progress that he has made in the last two weeks, ten days, whom he has traded some of this equipment that's a part of the problem. So, this individual's taken possession or will take possession, I'm not sure what the status, which specific pieces of equipment that is, but it's a couple of pieces of construction equipment, but this individual's taking that as payment and is assisting him. So, certainly, it's all at the last minute. But I think Mr. Adams' perspective has changed tremendously, and it's been impacted by Ms. Green's mental status and his desire to, I guess, to see the handwriting on the wall and recognize enough's enough. We fought this war, I don't know who won it, I don't think anybody won it. Everybody lost, taxpayers lost. I don't think Adams or Green have benefited in any way, and I just told him, it's like, if you want me to help you to try to put this behind you and to help Mimi to calm her down, so she doesn't think her home's gonna be torn down or lost, I'll be glad to do that. But if you think I'm gonna do anything to kind of stick it in the city's eye again, or some more, or whichever, not interested in that. So, you know, as an attorney, I think it's a, it's a very, it's a powerful position when you deal with individual clients and their rights and interests. Maybe I cross the line sometimes because I'm not real good at just kind of giving it to you, and y'all can tell. I mean, I think y'all could tell if I'm up here, you know, pardon me, BSing here or not, but I'm not. You know, so I went out there tonight, and I saw some real progress, more than I've seen, but in part, it's because he contracted with an individual, he paid them, trade, bar, whichever. Mr. Adams is the king of that. Lord knows, he could, if he focuses efforts elsewhere, he might be, you know, more successful in that regard, but he has achieved something. So, hopefully, I've responded, not beat that question.
Bert?
Ken, the thirty days that we thought it would take to allow us to move forward with the, I mean, has that, whatever had to happen in that period happened, and can we start out there tomorrow?
Councilmember, it has, the thirty days, one of the things that had to happen in that thirty days was we did petition the Superior Court for an order, and I've been very candid that I wasn't exactly sure how long that order would take, and the order has already been issued. Now, I will also say that Mr. Colvin has sent a letter to the court, basically objecting, but otherwise indicating that they want a chance to respond, and their position is, the Adams-Green position is, is that the order was entered prematurely before they had an opportunity to respond. And I suspect Judge Newkirk may in fact want to hear from the city and from Mr. Adams' attorney again, even though we already have the order in hand. Does that make sense? In other words, we had the order issued, but now Mr. Colvin has sent a letter saying, I really thank you, jumped the gun, Judge. I'd like an opportunity to formally respond to the motion by the city for the order, and I feel like the city is gonna have an obligation or needs to go ahead and provide a response to that as well. So, the answer to your question is, the order that I was looking for has already been entered. I will also tell you, though, there is now, you know, some additional dialogue that's gonna have to go on with the court, and I would probably request that we delay with respect to Carter issuing the notice to proceed, to at least, I feel like I have addressed the court's concerns, to the extent they have any concerns, based upon Mr. Colvin's letter to the court.
Well, I mean, as long as this has been dragging on, I don't think any gun's been jumped.
Karen?
The ultimate goal here is to get the property cleaned up.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't really care who cleans it up, but we have given him seven years to clean it up, and it's gotten worse during those seven years rather than better. Do you honestly believe, if you had another thirty days, the property could get cleaned up to our satisfaction?
If that's the shifting target of satisfaction, yes. I don't think that the property within thirty days would be completely cleaned, whether Mr. Adams spent every day doing it, or you hired a contractor who went out and started tomorrow as well. I think it's gonna take more than thirty days, but I can honestly say to you, ma'am, that I believe that there would be more, much more significant progress made now in that he can access much of these bigger pieces and such, but there's such accumulation of things that I don't see...
Oh, I mean, it's taken him seven years to get it this bad.
Right. I don't think it would take seven years to clean it up. I think it would probably take a good weather permitting, and then, I mean, I'm just off the top of my head, I'm not a construction guy, demolition guy, none of that, but it's the beauty of being an attorney, you get to try to do the best you can to give an estimate. So, I would say it'd probably take about three months of good efforts, good solid effort to do that. On Mr. Adams' part, now, I think if you had a contractor out there, eight to five, five days a week weather permitting, y'all could probably get it done in forty-five to sixty days. I think it's gonna take Mr. Adams a little bit longer than that. But if I could just speak as well, though, to what Mr. Gerard had spoken to about the court proceeding, I filed an entry of appearance on Ms. Green's behalf four or five days after she received, and Mr. Adams received their notice of the application and motion, and then I wrote a letter and followed up with Judge Newkirk to inform him of my representation of Ms. Green, and just let him know, hey, I'm gonna be responding to this. And then he issued the order, actually, the day before I wrote the letter, he issued the order on the twentieth of November, I believe. The motion and application was filed maybe on the fourteenth, or we mailed for service on that date. So, there's a fundamental due process and notice requirement that's at issue there, and certainly, now, as I've spoken to Mr. Gerard, I'm not so much interested in going in front of Judge Newkirk and arguing violations of such rights. What I'm more interested in is working with Mr. Gerard, as I'm interested in working with the, on behalf of Mr. Adams, with your council members, to work through all this, not to delay, but to actually get things done. So, yeah, we need to discuss that with the judge, but my desire would be that we, that I not have to take that adversarial position of, well, my clients didn't even get the thirty-three days they're entitled, was serviced by mail, to respond, but let's work out a stipulation that says, hey, in recognition of all that's going on, this is the timeline. So, you know, I'm not necessarily asking the members for any specific period, but I'm just saying, thank you, and I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of Mr. Adams and Ms. Green. It is helping, but there's a lot more to be done. So, I would, I would, I would not be feeling the same way or saying the same thing if I had not gone out there this evening and saw that burn, that forty or fifteen-by-seventy-foot burn moved. I absolutely wouldn't, because he told me, he contracted with somebody, and he told me that person was gonna help them, help them get started on getting this done, and those things have happened, you know. So, I expect that travel trailer to be gone this week. I expect the dozer to be scrapped this week and sold, and I expect some of those other heavier pieces of equipment that have remained there and been stored there for some ought to be gone. So, I think there's gonna be more progress. I think there's more work to be done with the court as well. And again, you know, he didn't tell me, come up here and get me thirty more days, he didn't really say anything. I was kind of surprised. He said, well, no, I'm not even going. I'm gonna let you handle that for me. And I can tell you, he has told me that last time when he came up, and y'all were so gracious to let him speak, he felt a little bit bad because y'all apparently had some rewards, and he felt like he was interrupting your proceedings and what you're trying to do. So, I can tell you, I haven't been around for the last eight years, I was only around for just a brief period of time, but I think there's been a change. And again, I think it's based on Ms. Green and his true concern for her, although certainly we can all say, well, if you were concerned about this or that, why'd you do all that you've done? I appreciate the opportunity to speak with y'all this evening. Thank you.
Does he, you know, and obviously, as Karen said, you know, the result is getting this cleaned up. It, you know, the city doesn't, the city doesn't want to spend city funds on it. Obviously, they're reimbursed, it comes out of their pocket, that doesn't bother them. You know, the smartest, most efficient way economically for Mr. Adams and Ms. Green is to, for them to get it done. Now, granted, we've, you know, and I'm sure our staff would agree, and our council, we've done every, everything we can. I'm gonna assume he knows that, you know, with this new information, and I don't know if we're talking a week, two weeks, or whatever, for, you know, some response from the judge and all, does Mr. Green realize that, you know, everybody he gets off of there ultimately saves him money and heartache by, you know, having less for someone else to come in and do?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but absolutely. He is, he's terrified of a lien. He's terrified of a bill against hers, you know, so he, for whatever reason, has turned the page, and he's now kind of seeing the ramifications or the end results of the conduct or activities, you know, being at war or battle, but, you know, I can't make sense of it myself, because, well, I'd never want to fight a city, you know, because y'all's coffers are a lot bigger than his, you know. So, he's up against that, but yeah, he does absolutely realize that. I've heard that. Will, you gotta do something. What are you doing, Will? Because you can't let them put a lien on our property. You know, Mimi's really thinking they're gonna tear the house down. Will, you gotta help us. So, you know, that's what I've been trying to do. That's what I'm trying to do.
Only comment I would have, I appreciate that, but the city's coffers are citizens' tax dollars, and we never have the attitude or idea that we've got there to, you know, go against our citizens, so we're definitely, this is not, you know, something we choose to do.
Sure.
Ken, you know, is...
Thank you.
In your opinion, you know, and I know you can't, you know, we're talking thirty more days of possible, you know, going back in lawyer, lawyer stuff, or two weeks, or...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we're gonna, we're clearly gonna spend more money on this, either in, either in the proceedings in front of the judge or... on this, either in, either in the proceedings in front of the judge, or just in the mobilization of the actual cleanup effort. I will say that, you know, Mr. Colvin did work with the city with respect to the structure, which is why the city did not have to go forward with respect to the abatement of that nuisance. But to the extent that the city council was of a mind to allow additional time, I think the best way to do that would be to, and again, it helps having an attorney to deal with as opposed to Mr. Adams and Ms. Green, I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, it's just easier to deal with an attorney on the other side. It might be to work with our enforcement folks and set up some critical paths, in other words, to set up, you know, here are the things that need to be removed by X state, here are the things that need to be removed by this state, et cetera, that's the only way I could think of that the council could get comfortable with.
You know, I might throw out that, you know, if, you know, if there was an assumption on your professional opinion that, you know, it's going to take thirty more days minimum to get some responses from the judge and all that, you know, maybe the council would consider, as you said, have a land, you know, have a bullet point or a position where, you know, if we're going to wait anyways, if there are some landmarks that he could get done, because obviously, if Mr. Adams gets it done, it helps us all out, but.
Well, I mean, we're going to have to, I mean, we feel we need to respond to the correspondence and to probably go a bit down and at least have perhaps a status conference with Judge Newkirk, I can't tell you how long that will take, and so, that just is going to play out on the court's timing, and nothing that I can tell you right now.
But until then, until that, i's are dotted and t's are crossed with the judge, do you suggest we don't do anything?
That's right, and that even means the council doesn't necessarily have to do anything, we could just let the process play out and continue to move forward, trying to get the final clearance by the court and address Mr. Colvin's concerns.
And I know that this is, it's a hard thing to put an exact parameter on, you know, but my comments, you know, here that have been said, you know, I'm certainly open to, if, you know, thirty days is going to go by, I'm open to staff's recommendation if they would, you know, do site visits and see what's going on, and bring us an update, and if there was some pretty serious work getting done and cleanup, you know, again, I can't speak with the council, but would certainly, you know, consider extending some time if it was getting done in a reasonable amount of time, but I'm just throwing that out, if council wants to address that or not.
I have got it, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, you know, part of our challenge here is, you know, having objective criteria on progress, you know, that's not just tainted with emotions and everything else, as long as we're making some kind of substantial progress, in whatever way, you know, that Mr. Adams chooses to get that done, either through a partner, contractor, or whatever, I think we should continue to offer him some opportunity to continue to make progress, I mean, we have been living with this situation for seven years, and I don't want to see it go on for another seven years, but, and that's why I get back to this objective criteria for progress, I mean, if there is real progress being made, then I, all in favor of giving him the opportunity to get this all cleaned up on his own as opposed to coming in and taking control.
Yeah, I would agree with what Joe's saying there, but I think we need to define what real progress is, like, we've been saying here, this has been going on even before the city was incorporated, and I think he's been put on notice several times there, I would hate to see this go on for another seven years, I wouldn't call that schedule as conforming to progress, so whatever Judge Newkirk comes up with, and whatever we can come to a consensus with on this, on this council, I think we really need to be serious about establishing a reasonable schedule, what reasonable progress is, and adhering to it, I don't think we need to be coming to this issue every thirty days, again, for the next thirty years, or seven years, talking about the same thing.
I would say, too, that I don't believe it's our decision to, as a council, to make the call on what the exact progress, I think, you know, staff needs to come up with sincere points where they, because they need to assess it, because obviously, there are some things, you know, maybe the sand or the rock that have value, that he can move around or sell, makes it look like progress, but then you leave the junk there that, you know, costs money that nobody wants to do, so it would certainly have to be a fairly strict, but, you know, within reason type of timeline.
Just a couple of thoughts and comments, here, we've been looking for progress on this thing for seven years, and we haven't seen it yet, and, you know, I can appreciate the stories of people all of a sudden seeing the light, but the reality is, is there are Milton citizens that have to drive past this every day and live next to it, and it's an absolute disaster, we've spent an extraordinary amount of tax dollars on the property, we've got the orders we need to go in and fix this, so that the rest of Milton that lives next to it doesn't have to live next to this eyesore, we need to keep moving forward, and that's my suggestion of a direction, I've been, I've been waiting for progress for seven years, and it hadn't happened, and it's not going to, and we've got the right court orders to move forward, we need to, we need to move forward.
Yeah, I was concurring with Councilman Legori, Councilman Lusk, and the mayor as well, the, as far as the council, though, I do think we do need to be careful about saying what we should have as progress defined by us, however, I think the determination of that progress should be by you, the staff, right, so, you know, as things change, as situations come up, he may be moving rocks or whatever, and you determine that is not acceptable, I'll be comfortable with whatever decision you guys determine is acceptable or unacceptable on that, but obviously, having the situation resolved as quickly as possible makes the most sense.
You know, and that's part of the problem with observing progress, is we lose a boat, but we get a trailer, you lose two jet skis, and you get a camper, you know, every time something leaves, something else comes back in its place, and, you know, does the stuff get moved around, and does it look different, well, yeah, it moves around, but if you go and look at it, you know, we've looked at this eyesore, this nuisance, this public nuisance for long enough, and, you know, we've exercised some self-help options, the court has seen it our way, and we need to keep moving.
I think there must be some reasonable or legal precedence for operating an illegal landfill, and I think that's what we have here.
Well, the reality is, and I don't know what the time is, if it's two weeks or a month, I mean, there's some legal time that we can't do anything, I would send the message to Mr. Adams, if during that two weeks or thirty days or whatever, he made a huge difference, maybe you could come back and report, and maybe our staff and the council might think differently, but, you know, might want to use this, whatever amount of time he has, to really make a huge difference, and if not, we move forward.
I'd like to just know when that, when you're comfortable with us moving forward, and in the same time, if that's whatever, two weeks, thirty days, forty days, is that we could have some access to actually not just a drive-by, if that's possible, but get up in there and see on a weekly basis, as I've mentioned to you, you know, earlier, so we wouldn't have this conversation, oh, I've been working hard, and it's raining, I can't do anything now, see if there's progress being made tomorrow, and a week from tomorrow, and the next day.
Can I respond?
Yes, sir.
Let me just first say there's no story, I don't tell stories, I'm not telling a story, I went out there this evening, and there's been progress made, but absolutely, if Mr. Lucas will meet me out there first thing tomorrow morning, I'll meet him, and I'll show him exactly what I've reported to you, your council members this evening, to confirm that, if that's needed, but I also say that you're exactly right, there needs to be a progress schedule, that's one of the frustrations I have, it's because I don't know when things are going to happen, and frankly, until I went out there this evening, I didn't know if anything had actually been done, I didn't know that, who this, whom this individual was, that he had told me, that he had sold these or traded these pieces of equipment for the happy work done, so, whatever's needed, we're working with the staff, as his representative, as Ms. Green's representative, I'm representing to you, as a twenty-two-year licensed attorney in this state, as his attorney of criminal proceedings before the municipal court, and in civil proceedings before the Superior Court, that I'm a man of my word, and I will do that, so, and I'm binding them to that right now as well, so if then, if it's not met, you can say, well, Mr. Colvin, you came in here last time, and you said that these things were going to happen, nothing's happened, believe me, I may pull him back in here if that occurs, but I don't expect that to occur, but I can't control the weather, he can't control it either, but there's enough good weather, or manageable weather, that we have in this great state of ours, that there can be some things accomplished while Mr. Gerard and I continue to work toward what we're doing there. And again, I'm speaking to not multiplying the city's costs in that regard, I'm speaking to working with Mr. Gerard, because Mr. Green, Mr. Adams and Ms. Green certainly have rights that I can seek to protect, I can seek, I can ask the court for an interlocutory order allowing appeal of this motion that's been granted, now, the court could say, no, I'm not going to do that, but if I got an appeal of that, if I got that granted by Judge Newkirk, did it go up to the court of bills, and it could just be languishing there for another year or so, but I don't want to be coming back here in seven years, there's no way. I'd like to see within about six months or so, we all looking at each other and having a little bit different demeanor, and saying, yeah, Mr. Colvin meant what he said, so I have the opportunity to prove that to you, and I just appreciate, you know, being able to do that, but it's up to me to get Mr. Adams to work with him, I can't control him, but he's not acting the way he did the last time, that he tried to briefly deport me.
Ken, you know, and again, I certainly read staff, and I read council, and obviously, staff has had to deal with this a lot more than council, and, you know, the reality is, we don't know, you know, you don't know what the courts will do, you know, may have two weeks, may have a month, may have a year, you know, I'm speaking for myself, if, you know, it got held up through the courts for thirty days, sixty days, or whatever, and Mr. Colvin came back thirty days from now, and had met with Carter, and it was fifty percent cleaned up, or it was, you know, I might reconsider it, but, you know, these guys sitting along here with you, Ken, have to be, for, you know, support that they've got to be on board and happy, so, I don't know if you've got an idea, or do we just let this drag on to the court, you know, makes the decision, and then we?
Let me just say this real quick, then I want to turn over to the city manager, I mean, the city attorney's office, you know, we've not received any instruction from the council except just to proceed, which is what we've been doing, and that will be, based upon the comments I'm hearing, that will be what we continue to do, although it does look like there is an interest with Mr. Colvin's assistance in trying to get Mr. Adams to expedite remediation, and everything that's done to expedite the remediation, I think, impacts the court proceedings and perhaps the cleanup, anything that's removed by Mr. Adams is something that a contractor doesn't have to remove, which is a good thing as well, but at this point, you know, that's going to be, the city attorney's office position going forward is to continue going forward, but I won't authorize Mr. Lucas, or I will not recommend that we issue a notice to proceed until I'm comfortable that the court is comfortable.
Karen, then Bill. I agree that we really shouldn't proceed until you're comfortable with the court allowing us to proceed.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think, and we don't know whether or not that's going to be a week, two weeks, thirty days, but regardless, it is some period of time, and so he has some period of time to continue cleaning it up until you're comfortable with us proceeding, and if by some miracle, in that seven, fourteen, thirty days, whatever, a lot has happened, then maybe at that time we revisit it, but to be honest with you, what he has is not just a light going off and a change of heart, it's much deeper than that with an illness of a person that would allow the property to get like that, and I'm not convinced that any light coming off, going off, is going to suddenly make him want to be a neat freak and get everything all cleaned up, even though he may think it will, and he may have good intentions, I don't know that we're going to change a basic personality with any light going off, and I think we owe it to the residents of Milton that have to live by it, to get this cleaned up as soon as the court allows us to get it cleaned up, and if he can get it cleaned up, you know, prior to that time, then we can do that, but I have a feeling we're going to be out there with a contract as soon as you feel comfortable allowing, you know, giving the go-ahead for it, because I don't know that he's going to be able to overcome seven years of this and get it cleaned up to where the residents of Milton deserve it to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Bill, you had a comment, then Chris, or Chris went down.
Point of information, Ken, Mr. Colvin mentioned that he filed a request with Judge Newkirk, have we been notified by Judge Newkirk that he's received that notice?
I believe Judge Newkirk has received it, yes, sir.
Okay, but he has not notified us that he's considering it, is that?
I believe, I believe the court, well, the document that was tendered to the court was a letter outlining various points as to why the order was issued prematurely and without, I believe, as Mr. Colvin said, due process, I believe it is appropriate and legally necessary that we file a response to that letter, at least to the judge's chambers, and then it would also be appropriate, and again, I've not spoken with Mr. Colvin about this precise issue, but it may be necessary for a status conference with Judge Newkirk to address those issues, but that's just for me and Mr. Colvin to work out, hopefully with the assistance of the court.
That's something you can keep us updated on.
Of course, of course.
And as soon as you feel comfortable, Carter should be able to go out there and look very quickly and tell us whether or not a tremendous amount of progress has been made, and we ought to reconsider whether or not to give some time, or if, you know, enough progress has not been made, and we just got to get this cleaned up for the residents' sake.
Chris?
Mayor, members of the council, so maybe what I'll suggest tonight, if you want to work towards that direction, this order from Judge Newkirk exists, and it exists in a, in a document that we have, and presumably, Mr. Adams and Mr. Colvin have as well, essentially, what it amounts to is a list that says which items have been seized that can be sold according to the auction requirements of the state, and then what items on the property have to be just disposed of in accordance with the law, so there is a list that exists out there today that says what is out of compliance and how it can be disposed of by the city. My suggestion, if you want to give this a little bit of time while the law plays out, whether, I don't want to sit here and debate the merits of Judge Newkirk's order, I guess at this point, he feels as though it was issued appropriately, he would have some, I guess, buyer's remorse if he decided to change his mind, but at this point, not deciding whether or not it's a good order or not, my suggestion is we take that list, and we take that list, and we say the next fifteen days, twenty-five percent of it needs to be off the property, and in the next fifteen days, a second twenty-five percent, that's a very easy status to monitor, because there are individual items that are listed by number, and I can go out there, and if I see a bicycle, I can say, that one's not satisfied, and I can go out there, and if I see a jet ski, and I can say, that one's not satisfied, but if we can count to twenty-five percent in fifteen days, an additional twenty-five percent in the fifteen days after that, I would think that that would be working towards substantial compliance. Short of that, you know, we've got to list items that need to, need to go, short of making that kind of progress, I think we make better progress affecting this through our self-help option than waiting on this problem to fix itself, for that as an idea, certainly, Mr. Colvin would have to agree, and Mr. Adams would have to agree that they could live with that, but at least it's putting some matrix to what success looks like.
Anybody else?
Chris? Mr. Coleman, I guess if I got to address you, do you think your client understands, he understands that it has to be cleaned up, do you think he understands he should not be bringing more stuff onto the property as he removes things, because that's not going to help him, I mean, that's an exchange, and I know one of the other council persons said that earlier.
I'm not sure how well he does understand that candidly and honestly, but I can tell you, I'm not a very good attorney, if I've not been listening to y'all's concern about that, and Mr. Lucas, I think, said something else had been brought, and I can promise you, he and I will be discussing that, if not this evening, then tomorrow, during business hours, I'm going to retire from this meeting and head home, and I'm going to get on my cell phone, and I'm going to tell him what the discussion was, and that's certainly going to be an item that we're going to be talking about, because certainly, that makes no sense to move stuff around, and I think the, and I don't know the city manager, assistant city manager, the gentleman himself, but I think that's a valid contention, and that's something that needs to be.
himself, but I think that's a valid contention, and that's something that needs to be addressed. And Madam Councilmember, your concern about the mental health and that status, that's a valid contention, and that's something that has to be addressed. But I guess I'm just dumb enough to take on something like this, and I don't know. I mean, it, you know, I'm, I wanna help, and I believe I'm doing that. And I believe that I'm gonna make sure that we address that concern as well. But the issue of the twenty-five percent, I would just say that's a great idea, fifteen days. But the only thing I would, only caveat or subject to, I would say, is I would like Mr. Gerard and I have already spoken about, say, for example, some of the, he had, Mr. Adams and Ms. Green have a valid building permit to improve the property. Their construction-related materials, that I understand, are on this list of items. So I certainly wouldn't want the twenty-five percent to include something that's validly there, that shouldn't be maybe on the list in the first place. So just subject to being able to speak to Mr. Gerard about that and come to some consensus, and I think we'll be able to do that, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Well, I think I-
We see some definitive progress. That's the way you measure how sincere this is, and that's the point we're at.
Well, you may be able to help your client in actually looking at the stuff that it needs to go. It's not resalable. It's trash-like. It's stuff that, as Councilman Luss said, is more something you'd see in a garbage dump, and it's not really reusable. That would be a great place to see some of that moved right away.
Yes, sir. I will tell you, Councilmember, that there is a trailer full of, and it's been there a little while, and I asked Mr. Adams tonight, "Why is that trailer still parked in the driveway?" And you had it three weeks ago, and it's still sitting there. But it has got some landscape debris, some old mattresses. I think there's an old TV and such. And Mr. Adams' response to me was, "Will, the trailer hitch on my truck was broke, and I've just gotten it repaired." And I said, "Well, good. That means this week, this week, that's gonna be gone." So I'll be over there tomorrow. I'll take a picture of it, and I'll certainly publish that so I can later in the week, go back Friday, take another picture of it not being there, without the trailer still being there, but those items being gone. You know, I'd expect to be able to take a picture, and I'll go over there tomorrow morning, my schedule such that I can, and I'll take a picture with my iPhone showing the road that I've spoken about, and I'll make sure that Mr. Gerard gets a copy of that, so y'all can see. I'm not saying you don't trust me, you don't believe me, but I know you've been talking about this for seven years. Way too long.
All right. What I'm gonna suggest is, we know we've got, there is a little bit of time, just the court process. I'm gonna look at what our city manager suggested. You guys got a little free time here. If, you know, two weeks from now, we're gonna meet again. If Chris or Carter wanna update us on where you're at, and if you're able to work out something where you take the list and check it off and all that, it behooves your client-
Absolutely.
-just as well as it does the city. So if you guys-
Thank you.
-you know, wanna move forward in that position, but bottom line, you gotta get, our staff has gotta be happy with the progress to report back to us to, if we make a different decision. But at this point, we're moving forward.
That's correct.
But you've got a little bit of free time. During that free time, make an improvement. These guys may come back to us and say, "Wow, they're really, they're really doing a good job and getting it done."
Thank you all. I appreciate that.
Council, all right with that? Chris?
Yeah.
Did you turn it?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Do we have anything else? On, okay. Do I have a motion? We had an executive session to discuss land acquisition and lease negotiations. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
A motion of second. All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a motion to reconvene.
Aye.
Do you oppose? That's your get out of order.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We oppose? We are pushing out to adjourn.